Good morning. I'd like to call the regular scheduled Painting Commission meeting for September 11th to order. Please rise for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
All updates to the agenda were published yesterday.
Thank you. Ms. Shank, is there anything from the County Attorney's Office?
Not at this time.
Thank you. We have approval for August 14, 2025 minutes. Any discussions or revisions needed? Yes, Mrs. Ziegler was second. Mr. Bauer was first. We're waiting on the voting to come up on our computers. Motion passes six to zero. Let's move on to citizen comments. This is for consideration for future agenda items. Each person will have three minutes. Please come forward if you'd like to say something. At this time, let's close citizen comments. You want to do the swearing in now?
If you plan on speaking for the Planning Commission this morning, or even if you think you may be speaking for the Planning Commission, please stand and raise your right hand. Please swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations here about state to the Planning Commission are truthful and accurate. Thank you. When you step to the podium, please state your name, county of residence, and if you have informed.
Thank you. Can we have item number one read in?
Yes. PDR 25-04 Perrin Z. Perrin G., Fifth Street Elmington Westerman Investments LLC is the owner. PLN 2502-0026 is a quasi judicial item. Camden Jenkins is the presenter today for Development Services. This is a rezone of approximately 3.38 acres, generally located 800 feet east of the intersection of First Street and 301 Boulevard East, and commonly known as 4010 Fifth Street East. Bradenton from RMF 6 Residential Multi-Family 6 to the PDR Plan Development Residential, approving a general development plan to include including 90 multifamily units with 100% of the units designated as affordable housing pursuant to a land use restriction agreement.
Thank you. Has there been any expert high communication in this? I've seen any. Can we have the applicant's presentation, please?
Good morning. My name is Aaron Vargas. I'm a developer with Elmington, representing the applicant. I'm excited to be here this morning. Thank you to Camden and the staff for working with us and getting the staff report together and getting us here to this point. So really excited about this development. You can go ahead and skip ahead to the next few slides. Oh, I can go ahead and skip ahead to the next few slides. Really excited to talk to you all about this development. Before I get into some of the specifics of the development itself, I wanted to give a little background on us on Elmington. So we are a developer headquartered in Nashville, but I'm in Tampa, about an hour away from here in Manatee. We've been around for about 15 years, and we specialize in the development of affordable and workforce housing, utilizing 4% and 9% tax credits mostly, and focused on new construction here in Florida. So we've developed about 11,000 units across our portfolio and have about 1,000 units under development in the state of Florida right now. One important thing to keep in mind about Elmington is that we're not a merchant builder. So we don't come in, build as quickly and as cheaply as possible, and sell it and then leave town. We are in it for the long haul. So we develop it, we build it, we own it, we operate it, and we're going to hold it for a long time. So it's, we're definitely incentivized to build a very quality product as much as the community is. And an important component of what we do and our approach is the property management side. You can build a beautiful product, but if it's not operated well, there's going to be issues. And Elmington Property Management, EPM, is does a fantastic job. You see there, they manage just under 48,000 units, over half the states across the country, several here in Florida, and they do an outstanding job in running these properties really, really well. So a couple of just quick examples of some of the recently completed developments from Elmington. So this one's in Cincinnati, Ohio. The, every exterior of our Elmington developments is going to look a little bit different because we really do try to tailor it to the community, to the area, to make the look and feel make sense. This next one is recently completed in Tallahassee, here in Florida, earlier this year, Ridge Road Flats. That's leasing up right now. It's leasing very well. And you can see a little bit more of the interiors here. We try to use double height ceilings in the common areas. You see some fitness centers. I'll skip ahead to some of the amenities as well. Fitness centers, business centers are really common in our developments. And a lot of the specs, you know, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, LED lighting. These are features that are commonly seen in conventional, even Class A developments, and that's something that we use as well. So let's talk a little bit more about Fifth Street and our proposal. So again, 90 units, and 100% of those will be affordable. I'll talk about the details of that in a moment. Just general location for you, the star there in the middle of the screen, that's the location of the site. Kind of going diagonally is 301. Then you see the larger development to the west. That's the old DeSoto wall. We'll zoom in here a little bit. As you can see here, again, the star kind of in the middle, it's identified as Fifth Street. A true infill, infill development. Adjacent to the north is a multi-story, multifamily property. A little bit further to the north there, you see a supermarket, a school to the northeast, there's Sprouts down to the southwest. And one of the reasons that we really like this site is because of the availability of public transit. So all of those yellow kind of pins that you see are bus stops. And then up to the northwest, about a half mile away, is DeSoto Station where there's seven different bus routes that are serviced at that station. So we really like the availability of public transit for the site. That's one of the reasons, one of the aspects that really, that really drew it to us. So again, just what we're requesting here today. Currently, it's zoned, as mentioned, RMF 6, so residential multifamily. The future land use, ROR, and it's currently a vacant site. So our proposal is to go to Plan Development Residential, PDR, no change to the future land use, and we would be proposing to develop the site at a density of about 26 units per acre. And that's using the affordable density bonus. And that bonus actually allows for up to 32 units an acre, but we felt when we looked at the site, we looked at the area, from a compatibility standpoint, we thought it made a little bit more sense to go with 90 units, about 26 units an acre. We certainly want to maximize what we can with those density bonuses while at the same time, making sure that what we're developing makes sense for the neighborhood and for the area. So here's a look at our site plan. As you can see there, it's just a single L-shaped building, kind of fronting on Fifth Street. It was on the right side of the screen with that access on the northeast corner coming into the property, and then a storm area on the west part of the property. So again, the proposal announced for 90 units on just under three and a half acres, and 100% of those, as mentioned, will be affordable. So they'll all be restricted between 30% and 80% of the area median income. Honestly, likely between 30 and 70% of the area median income. And again, we looked at the pictures. That does not mean that quality suffers at all. The plan for stone countertops, LED lighting, clubhouse, fitness center, onsite leasing, all the amenities that you would expect to find in a, in a conventional development. Last note here, we did have a neighborhood workshop. We held that earlier this summer in June and had a few folks from the community come out so we could explain our plans and our proposals and answer some of the questions that they had. So here is, I may not be able to play it. This is a virtual rendering. I've kind of swooped in and kind of showed you the 3D rendering of the property, but we can, we can keep it as still for now. As you see there, again, we're early in the design process, so it may not look exactly like that, but that's a pretty good representation of what we think this, this development will look like. As you can see, the parking lot is kind of screened from, from the street. So you're not going to drive by and just see a sea of parking. You're going to see a really good-looking development right there on Fifth Street. Oh, I spoke too soon. I'm sorry. We'll show you again. So again, leasing, kind of in the front part of the property. And again, that parking shielded by the, by the building. That retention area will be in the back. And again, our goal here is to preserve as many trees and as many natural features as we can to kind of create some screening from adjacent properties. Again, one of the, the big focus is when we do these type of developments, especially infill developments, we want to make sure that this, this looks compatible. It fits in, it makes sense, and that sort of thing. And I definitely think that this will, this will hit all those, all those criteria. So with compatibility, a quick look at the current zoning. You see we are the RMF 6 zone parcel there in the middle of the screen on the left side. Again, proposing to go to PDR, which would mirror the property adjacent to the north, which is a multi-story, multifamily property. General commercial to the west, heavy commercial to the south, some neighborhood commercial to the east, or the southeast. And then to the east, you have the Hazelhurst and Citrus Grove Estates with a mix of duplex, single-family, and mobile home developments to the east. And then on the right side of your screen, you see no change to the future land use. That'll stay consistent with, with what it is now. Last quick notes here. I know this is, this is more of a technical view of the development, but did want to mention again, the affordability component, you know, Manatee County not immune to what so much of the state of Florida and so much of the country is suffering from with a, with a lack of affordable housing. You see there on the, on the left side of your screen, over half of renter households in the county are cost burden, spending more than 30% of their income towards rent. And we know that the issue with affordable housing, of course, is cost, but an underlying issue there is supply and demand. There's just not enough supply of affordable housing to bring down the cost of housing. And you see there, it's projected in the next five years, by 2030, it will be a shortage of nearly 8,000 units for those earning $35,000 a year or less, the most vulnerable among us. And there will be, depending on the household side, between 10, household size, between 10 and 20 units that would likely serve folks in that income cohort. And then the last piece there, it's estimated that roughly nine in 10 of Manatee County's residential zoning land is designated for a single family. So when you have a relatively smaller portion of zone zoning that allows for multifamily, it's really helpful if you can push the density in those areas while doing it in a reasonable way. So we think that this, this will serve the community well in a lot of different aspects, and it's a project that we're really excited about. And that is it for me. If you have any questions, let me know. I'm here to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant? I think we're good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Could we have staff's presentation?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Camden Jenkins with staff, and I have been sworn. The proposed project site is located 800 feet east of First and 301, and it's about three and a half acres in size. The property is currently in the retail office residential future land use category, which allows for up to 32 dwellings an acre for projects with at least 25% affordable housing. And the current zoning district is residential multifamily 6. The property is located in two special areas of Manatee County. The first is the urban service area, which is an area of the county that already has established public facilities and services. The second is the southwest tax increment financing area, which encourages redevelopment in its boundaries. This request is for a rezone to Plan Development Residential with a general development plan for 90 multifamily dwelling units, all of which are designated as affordable housing. The project has proposed one access point along Fifth Street East, no specific approval requests, and has proffered stipulations. The general development plan proposes a four-story corridor apartment and stormwater management area. All 90 units will be priced between 30 and 80% AMI. Now, the applicant did hold a neighborhood workshop for this project. Two members of the public attended, and the workshop lasted 26 minutes. The public listed concerns about stormwater, utilities, affordability, safety, and the timeline for construction. There were no specific approval requests with this project. And as for public facilities, there is an existing county six-inch water main on the east side of Fifth Street East and existing county 24-inch water main within the US 301 right-of-way. There's also an existing county eight-inch gravity main within the Fifth Street East right-of-way for wastewater, and there is no county-owned reclaimed water infrastructure currently present at the location. Now, the project is not located within the FEMA 1% annual chance flood hazard area, so stormwater will be designated to discharge to existing right-of-ways, and there are no maintained ditches adjacent to this site. The transportation link capacity analysis shows no change in capacity caused by this project on all of the nearest thoroughfare links. Staff has reviewed this project for consistency with both the comprehensive plan and compliance with the Land Development Code. For some positive aspects of this project, the future land use category does anticipate this type of residential development in the area. The applicant has proposed 90 multifamily dwelling units at 30 to 80% AMI. The proposed project provides affordable housing in the urban service area. The applicant has proffered 47.3% open space, which well exceeds the required 25%. And the project is close to transit stops, which will reduce auto dependency. This residential project is also adjacent to a commercial complex, which will help reduce the length and duration of home-based shopping trips. Staff has not found any apparent negative aspects with this project. And of course, during final site plan review, the Land Development Code requirements will make sure that this project is consistent with the Land Development Code and compliant with the comprehensive plan. As for stipulations, the primary one I wanted to highlight is that the applicant will enter into a land use restriction agreement pursuant to Chapter 5 in a form that's acceptable to the county. And in conclusion, this request can be found to be consistent with the policies of the comp plan and the applicable standards of the Land Development Code. Staff will conduct a thorough analysis for compliance with both documents at time of final site plan. Thank you. Any questions?
Nope, we're good.
Sounds good.
At this time, let's open this up for public comment. Please step forward if you have anything to say in reference to this project. I'm going to close public comments. Applicant or county, any final? Applicant, any final comments? Can, any deliberation, or could I, clarification needed?
Yeah, I just think it's a great project. I'm happy to see it be truly affordable housing, and I just have nothing negative to say. I think it's great.
Can I entertain a motion?
Oh, I can do that.
You have to verbally say it now?
Moved. I'm moved.
Oh, there we go. So moved by Ms. Kebba, seconded by Ms. Prosser. Please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero. Please read the next item.
The next item is a companion item. Two and three go together. PA 2410, ordinance 2538, Penler Lorraine, CPA Small Scale Conference of Plan Map Amendment, PLN 2406-0144. This is a legislative item. Camden Jenkins will be the presenter. This is a privately initiated small-scale map amendment to the future land use map of the future land use element of the Manatee County Conference of Plan of two parcels, approximately 19.51 acres of real property, generally located 1,130 feet south of 44th Avenue East, along the east side of Lorraine Road in Bradenton, and commonly known as 4973 and 4985 Lorraine Road from Res 1, Residential 1, to Res 6, Residential 6, future land use category. This is to be heard with PDR-24-18 Perrin Z. Perrin P. Penler Lorraine, T. Ralph Taylor Jr., Family Limited Partnership LLP, sorry, LLP. Penler Development LLC is the contract purchaser. PLN 2406-0126, this is a quasi judicial item, and Camden Jenkins will be the presenter. This is a rezone of two parcels totaling approximately 19.51 acres, generally located 1,130 feet south of 44th Avenue East, along the east side of Lorraine Road in Bradenton, commonly known as 4973 and 4985 Lorraine Road, from A, General Agriculture, to PDR Plan Development Residential Zoning District, approving a preliminary site plan for 232 multifamily residential dwelling units with at least 25% of those units designated as affordable housing, subject to a proposed land use restriction agreement.
Thank you. Has there been any expert high communications in this? I've seen any. Can we have applicant's presentation, please?
Absolutely. My name is Connor McAdams, Fulton County. I have been sworn. Thanks so much for taking time to hear us this morning. We're a real estate investment and development firm. We have plenty of experience in Florida. We've developed over 10,000 units in the state and recently in Manatee County. We've invested, developed, and operated Class A apartments in this area. So we've done the tradition at Palm Air on University. In Sarasota County, we own Botanic Water. In Sarasota County, we own Botanic Waterside, and we're currently under construction on State Route 64, just west of Popra, for a mixed-use development with apartment and commercial aspects. So I just want to give a quick introduction to the applicant, us, and as well as our team that we have here. We've got Scott Rudisil, our land use attorney, John Osborne, our planner. We have the applicant here, or the owner here as well, who's going to present on some really unique aspects of this community, Florida Water Star conservation component of it. And we've got Brett Rockline, our civil engineer, and I think we're missing our traffic attorney. Or, okay, we could do that. Hey, Bassett. We have our traffic engineer here as well, to address any concerns there. So I just want to take a minute to talk about why we think this makes sense, why we think this community is unique and deserves a good look. I've already introduced the team to y'all. You heard the acreage. The total unit count here is 232 units. This product type is a two-story apartment complex with direct entry, so every single unit has their own front door and private stairwell, if it's an upstairs unit. It's a, you know, a very low, intense use. It's got a ton of green space, ponds, and I just think it's a really, really good mix when you're coming off that activity node at Lorraine and 44th. This is something that would blend really well into some of the single-family as that Lorraine Road continues to kind of grow and take shape. Just jump ahead. So Penler typically invests with institutional capital partners. These groups pictured here are actual historical partners of ours. They spend around 40% of the revenue of the property on upkeep, so they protect their, they make large investments and then protect their investments with substantial maintenance and upkeep. And so this results in just a really high-quality product that are built to last. We use local GCs, and we typically have a local consultant base here, too, that helps us, you know, address concerns from the community and, just like I said, deliver a seamless project that the community can benefit from. Here's a representation of our site plan. This is a PSP, so this is what we're going in with. We're not doing a GDP. These are two-story buildings. The orange buildings are 12-unit floor plans. The blues are eight. We'll have the 15-foot green belt buffer. We've tried to be really thoughtful in our space planning here by providing ample buffers and green space. You know, typically in this two-story product, we can get closer to 16 units per acre, but we're only going for the 12 with our affordable bonus. More on that later. The clubhouse is a, you know, Class A clubhouse with your typical luxury amenity package, pool, gas grills, fitness center, workspaces, et cetera. Here's a proposed elevation for this exact product type that we've built in central Florida. You can notice the side-by-side doors for your exteriors. We do really great landscaping, and we'll hear from the owner about, more on that. So the owner is currently a nursery, and this is the Taylor family, and they've gotten really into the Florida Water Star concept. He's going to give a little presentation on that at the end of our product, but it focuses on just conservation, water conservation. On the interiors, you've got low-flow plumbing fixtures, you've got energy-rated appliances, and on the exterior, you have to go through this entire landscape design where you're utilizing rainwater from the downspouts. You have thoughtful irrigation design so that you're not wasting that. You've got drought-resistant types of different plants, but I'm not going to steal his thunder. We can go into that later. Again, this is just a great facade here. Interiors are high-quality quartz, stainless steel appliance package. We'll have pretty much everything that you could think of. I don't think there's really anything noteworthy here, except for it's a luxury Class A product. More representation pictures here. At this point, I think I'm going to go ahead and just turn it over to the consultants to give a little bit more of a technical analysis, but we appreciate your time on this.
Thanks, Connor. John Osborne, Greens Street Associates, and I have been sworn. So next up is talking a little bit about the plan amendment itself. And as y'all know, to amend your comprehensive plan, to amend your future land use map, it requires there's some criteria that we have to meet, and usually it's consistent with being like a change of circumstance. And also, the statutes get into a lot of discussion about, hey, are you, are you not, you know, urban sprawl-related? If you go back to 1990, when the Manatee County adopted its comprehensive plan as a result of the 1985 Growth Management Act, this is the future land use map that was adopted, and I've kind of zoomed in on that red box. You'll see that red box show up. This is the area of the subject property, and the yellow dash line is Lorraine Road. It was kind of hard to pick out on that without making it highlighted for you. But back in, you know, 1990, when this was adopted, this was very much an agriculture area, and everything was, either had a future land use designation of Res 1, there was a little bit of ROR at the intersection of 70 and Lorraine, but again, and there was some UF3 to the north. But generally speaking, this was still very much, you know, an area in ag. And the reason it carried a Res 1 versus like an ag rural or something like land use designation like that was, they established back then a utility service area, and this was inside that future utility service area. So that's why it has like a developable land use designation versus like a rural land use designation. Fast forward to 1999, you can see that little red box there down at the bottom, that's the area we're in. And this was a time when, actually, when I worked at the county, I worked here for about 20 years. And when I was in the planning side, we worked on an amendment to the comprehensive plan to amend this map, actually, because you can notice that the development area boundary, which is that red line going to the middle, that's also your water and sewer service area boundary. So the plan back then was obviously to encourage development, to extend your lines and fill that area up to that boundary. And we did an amendment back then to align the future land use, the water and sewer service area boundary, and to get it all aligned so it made sense, so you didn't have ag designation inside the water service boundary and that kind of thing. And that happened 99, 2000. So on the left, you'll see in 2009, this is right before Shorter Manatee Ranch did a larger-scale amendment to their property. And back then, there was a state agency called the Department of Community Affairs. And the Department of Community Affairs treated counties like, almost like you had this glass ceiling of maximum capacity for development. They added up basically all your land use designations, did the math by your acreage, and that's kind of like your glass ceiling. So the Shorter Manatee Ranch wanted to consolidate some of their density and intensity. So you'll notice from the map on the left to the map on the right, they amended and consolidated much of their density, and they created a mixed-use community future land use designation with nodes and things like that. But this area along Lorraine Road was kind of left behind. It wasn't owned by Shorter Manatee Ranch. And actually, areas to the north, to the north, along the roadway, there's a lot of areas that were sold off over the years by the ranch. And also, areas to the west and east and south were also owned by Shorter Manatee Ranch as well. But you can see this area has really sort of, for lack of a better term, left behind. It's a bit of a donut hole, for lack of a better term, in terms of what's been going on around in the area. And now, this is just a zoom in of the area today, and again, you can see sort of that remainder of that Res 1 there. There's also, the blue lines, you can see, in 2018, the law changed where if you had a development over 2,000, it's like big stuff, you had to go through the Development of Regional Impact process, that's no longer required, that went away in 2018. You can see inside those blue lines, all the property like around us, the bigger holdings, went through that process and were developed with that process. This area was not, because it wasn't owned by those entities, but the areas obviously to the east and north, obviously, carried on in that fashion. And going back to 1994, and I put on here the county's thoroughfare map, and obviously, these roads weren't there then, but just to give you a frame of reference of where we're at in the county, this is 1994, Liquid Ranch Boulevard didn't exist, White Eagle didn't exist, 44th didn't exist. Then you look at, actually, 2006, you look at your far left, you can see the high schools there, Liquid Ranch High School. And then as we kind of go through this, you'll see Central Park has developed, the YMCA's popping up, LeCom. And then, of course, 2025, there's development all around it. And so the change of circumstances is certainly there, that this area is really now an infill development area. It's obviously, again, with concurrency map, the development has happened really kind of all around it, but the land use designation is still Res 1, it has never been changed. Utilities is all around it. There is a water line on the west side, and on the east side, a little bit north of the subject property, and there's a sewer line a little bit north on the east side of the subject property as well. And there's a CIP project to expand Lorraine Road on the horizon. In terms of very investment by the county and the school board, this area has had premier sports, the library's been developed. So the county has made significant investment in the area, and this area, you know, hasn't really caught up in terms of development density and intensity to what's around it. And if you look at Liquid Ranch's marketing materials, there's a bit of a donut hole, you know, here on this side. So certainly, a change of circumstances has occurred. And the county has grown consistent with the plans. A lot of people say, well, what's the plan? The county has no plan for growth. Well, the county has actually a lot of plans for growth and how to handle growth, our comprehensive plan, our future land use map, and all the different, the sewer master plans, the water master plan, all these, we have master plans for just about everything, and they all really do this, they all integrate together, and they come together every year when the board decides, you know, what's going to be funded, by what funding source is consistent with the master plans, taking the impact fees, the infrastructure sales tax, and making the improvements after that in terms of keeping up, you know, with growth. It goes back, actually, back to the 1960s, and 1983 even, with your cost of services study that really showed that you really need infill development to happen. Because if you start, if you think of the previous map, we showed all that infrastructure and services that you have to pay for, schools, water, sewer, EMS, libraries, parks, all those things. It's, fiscally, it's challenging to do that if you have low-density development inside your utility service areas. And all these different studies over the years have really said that in terms of be careful about that. When I was your planning director for a while, soon as I got that position, I got sat down and I got a talking to by my boss, the county administrator, and our CFO, about density and how they're going back to that 1983 cost of services study and other plans and other things that were going on in the county financially, and also things in the state, homestead exemptions and homestead portability. The challenge was, is how do you pay for services and what minimum density you really should be looking for? So we're able to, we expanded on the nodal-based development, expanding that a bit, because we're actually just on the, we're part of our properties within the actual activity node at the intersection just to the north. So we're in there, and fortunately, that has never been a buy-or-ride kind of thing. It's not like an exact permitted use, sometimes like lower-density development is in suburbs. But in terms of the nodal-based development, it's really critical to get that, especially from an infill perspective, and to get the density you need that actually helps pay the bills for the lower-density stuff in other places. So having said that, so Connor talked a little bit about the project itself in terms of what we're, what the site layout looked, and you'll notice one of the things that stands out to me in this is actually the amount of open space that we have. And it's kind of surprising, you think, oh, you're 11.89 dwellings per acre, but when you look at the map, it doesn't really seem like it. We have over, we have 54%, I believe, open space, a tremendous amount of open space and area for the site. We have really good setbacks from our neighbors to the east, south, and north. And we also, obviously, we have planning on being consistent with the county's plan development residential zoning regulations, and that's consistent with the Liquid Ranch area. The PDR standard zoning is a very high standard, very good green belt buffers, other standards in there that is consistent with the neighbors, actually, to the east in terms of how they were developed as well. We all know what the green belt buffers typically look like when they come out of the ground, but, so, anyway. The next person up is actually Mr. Rudisil. I'm taking too much of his time right now. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, John, and that's not true. I'm going to be brief. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Scott Rudisil. I'm here representing the applicant. The applicant's taken a number of steps with this project to try to mitigate any concerns. In terms of the multimodal, the applicant's offered to construct a bus stop on-site, also offered to provide funding to extend sidewalks offsite in both directions. From a timing standpoint, we understand some of the timing concerns about Lorraine Road. The applicant's agreed to delay the start of construction until August of next year. The applicant has also agreed to delay their first certificate of occupancy until November of 2027. The project is also going to contribute an estimated almost $2 million in impact fees, which could be put towards those improvements, so that's a major positive. They've gone above and beyond the affordability requirements of the livable Manatee program. That program requires that 25% of the units be at a maximum AMI of 120%. What's being proposed on this project is that half of those affordable units would be at or below 80% AMI, and half of the affordable units would be at or below 100% AMI. So they're all going to be well below what's required to qualify for that program. The project is going to meet or exceed all the county's stormwater standards. They've agreed to develop the project in accordance with the Florida Water Star program, which you're going to hear some more about from the property owner. And they propose a maximum height of two stories, which is consistent with everything that's existing around there. This shows the estimated impact fees for the project. Obviously, we talked about the transportation, which is almost $2 million, but the total amount of impact fees that would be paid are estimated almost $4 million for this project. And this side kind of gives you an idea of where those rent ranges would be on the affordable units, kind of what the ranges would be. This is a true mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, as well as a mix of rental rates, which is really what you want to see. Gives you a look at what types of incomes would be qualifying for those units. And then this slide gives you an idea, based on the Board of Labor and Statistics, kind of what types of occupations would be qualifying for those units and those salaries. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Taylor and let him talk about Water Star.
Good morning. John Taylor, Manatee County resident. I have been sworn. This board has made it very clear that it requires responsible development to be submitted via, and some previous mentions include urban infill inside the F-DAB to prevent sprawl, responsible water runoff management, a centrally-located site for optimal multimodal transportation to reduce car trips, and enhanced resource conservation. Florida Water Star is going to make sure that we have increased green space, reduced water consumption, and increased water retention, and we do all of that being compliant with Florida State Statute 373.185. This board understands Florida Statute 373.185 as a guideline for preventing irresponsible developments. I'm proud to say that this community, by following Florida Water Star standards, is 373.185 compliant, and it is my hope that it will be the first Water Star-certified community in Manatee County. I'm not going to read all of 373.185, but I'm going to give a quick sentence out of it that I think summarizes it. The legislature finds that the use of Florida-friendly landscaping and other water use and pollution prevention measures to conserve or protect the state's water resources serve a compelling public interest, and that the participation of homeowners' associations and local governments is essential to the state's effort in water conservation and water quality protection and restoration. The landscape irrigation and Florida-friendly landscaping design standards, which I believe you all were given a packet of, were designed based off of Florida Water Star. The landscape irrigation design standards were made for easy implementation to the LDC. However, with SB 180, we know that things like this are having some issues right now. So the previously-existing Florida State Statute 373.185, thankfully, is allowing this board to protect our county from irresponsible development. Florida Water Star is the measuring stick that is needed to make sure new development meets state rules. This builder has committed, all irrigation and landscaping will be designed to Florida Water Star standards and will be designed with an accredited landscape architect. At final site plan permit, the applicant will demonstrate that the property will comply with Florida Water Star standards. From a consumption standpoint, Florida Water Star Homes, a two-person household, on average, saves 40,000 gallons of water per year. So when we look at this infill potential and the ability to avoid sprawl but consolidate where we have the resources to do it, and we're saving the county's resources in the way that we're building, this is a huge advantage. The reason for explaining Florida Water Star and the landscape irrigation design standards mimicry of each other is to show the respected contributors of the Florida Design Standards. So as you can see from the screen, all of the water management districts, F-DAX, the Florida Department of Transportation, the Florida Association of Counties, the Florida League of Cities, IFAS, FNGLA, Florida Native Plant Society, the Chapter of American Society Landscape Architects, the Florida Irrigation Society, and the Association of Florida Community Developers, all took the time to work on this document and base it from the Water Star standards because they know that these are the standards that we need for responsible development in the future in the state of Florida. So let me give you some examples. Florida Water Star requires increased tree canopy coverage more than regular county code. Florida Water Star doesn't give credit for tree canopy that would potentially overgrow the property line, which means more canopy trees on the interior of the community will be required to ensure proper canopy coverage within the community. So when you look at the image on the screen and you think about the buffer that we're required to do by the county, those trees that are going to overlap the property line, we don't get, that doesn't count for Florida Water Star. So we have to put more trees in the interior in that green space, which I'm going to come back back to. Florida Water Star requires water buffer zones, you know, like a wetland setback. Also known as bioswales, nutrient inputs to our, also known as bioswales, nitrogen inputs to our bodies of water. These buffer zones will give all water runoff an opportunity to be absorbed in this space. So we're looking at the middle image here. This keeps more runoff pollution out of our water bodies, and the soil is the secret there. Those spaces are no mow, no irrigation, no fertilization. And then you add in the fact that we have that additional vegetation, that is all going to have the ability to absorb more water before it even reaches the storm ponds. On the far right, the soil is the secret. The USDA and NRCS study found that every 1% increase in organic soil matter results in as much as 25,000 gallons of available soil water per acre. Water Star design standards increases soil health. Average regularly cut grass that you water and fertilize takes up to 20 years to build a minimal layer of topsoil. Landscapes installed with trees, shrubs, additional inputs like mulch, and have a higher diversity of plant material greatly increase the creation of organic material in the soil. This is part of Florida Water Star, too. All toilets are going to be high efficiency, 1.2 gallons per flush max, single showerheads with a flow rate of 2 gallons per minute or less. All lavatory sink faucets have a flow rate of 1.5 gallons per minute or less. All dishwashers, clothing washers, dryers, refrigerators, all have to be Energy Star certified. So not only are you saving electricity, but every drop of water that goes into the community is being used as efficiently as possible. This community is retaining over 50% green space. These large continuous blocks allow for health to grow, sorry, allow for the soil health to grow and offer increased water retention, preventing runoff for years to come. A question always comes up, what are we going to do if we get more rain in the future? Well, in these interior spaces, these large unabridged green sections, we're going to have large growth areas of trees and shrubs and ground covers. And as they grow and mature, they're going to increase that soil biology, which increases water retention. So as time goes on, it is retaining more water and more water. That prevents that water from ever reaching those stormwater ponds. It prevents the nutrients from ever reaching those stormwater ponds. The biggest thing here is that it's all connected. When you have a standard community and you chop up every single house where there's a driveway and a sidewalk and a driveway and a sidewalk, you have all these tiny patches of grass. You have to then amend each patch. You don't have a continuous area where that soil can build biology and work together. By consolidating the houses in this way, they have increased the green space, and that has made for a way for us to actually retain water, build soil health, and build an ecological solution that matches our development. I thank you, and I want to ask for your approval, and we're turning it back for dialogue.
Thank you. That's all we have, Commissioners. Our entire team here is available to answer any questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Bauer?
Guys, somebody talk to me about the special approval request and where that buffer reduction is on this slide, please.
See if we can, so the specific approval, this is for the ag setback. Typically have a 35-foot setback from active agriculture, which on a project like this, they're going to look at again at FSP and see if there actually is active ag at the time of final site plan. But if there is, we've asked for a reduction in that from 35 feet to 30. That's on the south side.
So that side that's butting up against another agricultural property?
Right. It's a nursery to the south.
That's a nursery right now? Looks like there's a house on it.
Oh, it's a house. Okay.
So why the reasoning to reduce the buffer, especially on the side that's adjacent to a homeowner?
Well, the setback is for ag, and there's not really a lot of ag going on there. So that's the reason for the reduction in that setback. It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be a setback to prevent impacts from, you know, potentially heavy adjacent agricultural operations actually on this project. And so we don't really feel it's necessary here. Like I said, we don't even know if there's going to be ag on that site by the time we get to final site plan, but that's the reason for the ags.
So when I first signed on this commission years ago, John was a huge proponent of my education. So assuming that this wasn't agricultural, then would there be no, what would be the requirement then in terms of the setback if it was just non-agricultural to that side?
I think it would be 15 feet, 15-foot setback.
Okay. And then you talked about the timing, I think pretty much relating to the widening of Lorraine Road. How did you come up with the dates of the potential delay of building and occupancy?
We put some, we basically put some sand on our numbers. We talked with the owner about a later closing date, and that gives them more time to get through the growing season because they've got to move their nursery operation west. And so this is a good time for us to just tell you guys, hey, we have an extra four or five months baked in. We can wait a little bit longer. And then on the occupancy, we're typically 14 months to first CO. We put it like 18 in our, in our schedule for that.
I'm sure we'll ask staff about this, but do you have an understanding of when the soonest Lorraine Road is going to be widened?
Yes, sir, I do. We recognize it's a kind of moving date, and that there's been a lot of deliberation in the past couple of weeks. It's come to light, I think as recently as yesterday was the latest news article I read.
Okay.
We can, sorry for interrupting, but we can talk about, oh, go ahead.
No, that's okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
We could have our traffic engineer comment on some of the Lorraine Road impacts.
We'll get there once staff comes around. It was just fine. And then just from a, what's your response to residents in terms of the compatibility of, I mean, it's a beautiful project, I'm not going to lie about that, but we're going to hear from a lot of people
Right.
about the compatibility. Obviously, this is an area there that is continuing to be crunched with development. A lot of the properties to the west appear that, you know, they're not agricultural. There's several homes on a lot of property, et cetera, setback from Lorraine Road. What's the applicant's response to the compatibility argument from the people around that area?
The main things we heard from the neighbors were, you know, this is a really intense apartment development. The rebuttal there is it's a two-story project with a ton of open space, ample setbacks, and upgraded buffers. We hear a lot about the traffic, and so we say, we're doing everything we can to plan for that, reimburse the county for infrastructure improvements, to design the site thoughtfully so that we have room to move east in as they grow, and we want to connect sidewalks so that we can create more pedestrian, you know, alleviate some of the pedestrian stuff because when this is built out, we will have a lot of pedestrian connectivity. And then we hear oftentimes from neighbors, you guys are going to bring in, you know, lower, maybe lower income, and I think the beautiful thing about this property is it's a mix.
I'm not worried about that argument, so you don't have to elaborate.
Okay. Anything else from the neighbors that we should get ahead of? Stormwater, which we've kind of covered amply, you know, excessive conversation.
John Osborne, Green Street Associates, and the land planner associated with the project. And typically, like when you look at the county, for example, if this was a project that wasn't going to hearing, you would, the county staff would look at the matrices, the land development code, the buffer matrices, of what uses next to what, and you utilize that buffer matrix and the setbacks they're in. And that is, you meet that standard, and that is the standard of compatibility. Here, this is actually partially within a node of an intersection of two function classified roadways. So those, the intent of the comprehensive plan is to have a little bit more density intensity here. So with that, the utilizing the PDR buffers and landscaping and the open, and up in the open space and up in the green space is what the applicant, the applicant chose a specific type of product that'd be more compatible with what the neighbors are to the east essentially. If you look at, if we had a, if I could bring up the aerial back again, if you see this layout versus what's to the east, the east looks, even though it's only to Dolores Breaker, it looks much more intense than if you walk down the street versus walking down these areas here.
And the entire project will be rental, correct? Not any homeowners or?
Correct. It's a rental project, yes.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
I just have one quick, it's not actually in an activity node, correct?
It's partially, there's two parcels, and a south parcel. And the north parcel is within the 1,500-foot node, but the south portion of the parcel is not. So it's not quite halfway through there, but it's close to it.
So 44th Street makes the node?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got one other question as well. So the, there is the affordable housing component of this.
Yes.
It's obviously a small percentage that meets the criteria for what's required there. Knowing there are upsides for the development with the affordable housing, what's the upside for this one?
Providing jobs to, well, think about all the things that we showed you in terms of all the different.
I think I asked that wrong.
Okay.
What's the upside for the development to have 25% of the affordable housing?
Well, the upside is we're providing, we have a wider variety of clientele we can reach in terms of providing, if you look at the demographics of the area, there's people that work at the industries in the area, that work at the school system area.
Again, I think we're missing the question.
Okay.
What is the, what is the bonus for the development? There's the opportunity for expedited.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
What are the ones, what are we getting here?
So the land development code allows, if you provide, if you provide affordable housing, you're allowed certain incentives like timing, or you have quicker returns on the developer reviews and things like that. And there's this application process we go through, the county calls it the neighborly system. You apply in there, and there are certain incentives that we request in terms of timing and things like that. One of the things also, too, maybe in terms of like, the county comes in to get widen the road at some point, we may actually ask to actually pay to pay for that, not ask for a sidewalk deferment, as like, we don't need the sidewalk, or let us not build that, but we'll actually pay the county for that sidewalk in place of them tearing it up later and that kind of thing. That's not necessarily an incentive. We could ask for that, but we're not. But mainly, the incentive for us is really the timing of review and that kind of thing.
And so?
Oh, thank you. And the density bonus. Thank you.
And the density?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so in the land use categories, in the matrices, you can see you do get higher density intensity. And that's also backed up by Florida Housing Association, everybody else, because they understand the need that to provide that level of housing, you need to have some other housing to help pay the bills, so to speak.
Right. So I mean, again, I'm, I'm so, like, I like the Florida Water Star, I like the project. I'm just trying to, why have any of the affordable housing component on this? Is it really just for the expedited permitting and for higher density? Are those the reasons? I mean, so, so, and again, I'm not trying to dig too deep into the business model here, but if you didn't have the affordable housing component, your prices would be higher and...
Right. The biggest piece is the density bonus.
How big is the density bonus?
It goes from a max of six in Res 6 to a max of 12 units to the acre. So that's what makes the project work.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Could we have staff's presentation, please?
Hello again, Commissioners. Camden Jenkins with staff. I have been sworn. Now, this site, it consists of two parcels and is about 19 acres in size. The property is located around 1,000 feet south of the intersection of 44th and Lorraine. The property currently has a classification of Residential 1 and is located in the General Agriculture Zoning District. The property is located in two overlay districts. The first is the special treatment overlay, which is meant for industrial and mining uses, so it isn't really relevant to this proposed project. However, the Evers Reservoir watershed protection is applicable to this project. Its protection of the public water supply has required this project to propose at least 35% open space, and all of the open space in landscaping is required to be maintained by the developer. The first request would reclassify this property from Residential 1 to Residential 6, which would allow for a base density of six dwellings an acre. With an affordable housing bonus, that density can be increased to 12. The second request is for a rezone to planned development residential with a preliminary site plan for 232 multifamily dwelling units and an amenity center. The project has proposed two access points along Lorraine Road, one specific approval request, and has proffered stipulations. So as you can see here, the project proposes 12 buildings at a maximum height of two stories apiece, with a one-story height for the leasing office. The project also proposes 55% open space and 25% affordable housing. The leasing office is proposed at 6,000 square feet in size. The applicant did hold a neighborhood workshop for this project. Two members of the public attended, and the workshop lasted 40 minutes. The public's primary concern was the traffic capacity and the widening of Lorraine Road. The applicant does have one specific approval request, as was discussed, and LDC Section 401 3E8 has an agricultural setback of 35 feet for residential projects to avoid any potential adverse impacts from agricultural uses. The applicant has requested to shrink this setback by five feet to 30 feet. If we look at the southeast of the property, that little rectangle to the south is where they are requesting that setback reduction to 30 feet. For public facilities, there is existing county eight-inch water mains along Lorraine Road and just north of the project site for potable. Depending on capacity, both might be available for tie-ins. As for wastewater infrastructure, there's an existing county 24-inch force main along 44th and an existing private eight-inch force main and stubout to the north of the site, with ownership expected to transfer over to Manatee County. For reclaimed water infrastructure, there is an existing private 10-inch reclaim along 44th. Although the project appears to lie just south of the Braden River Utility Service Area, there may be options for connection. Potable water is not allowed to be used for irrigation. This project is also not located in the FEMA 1% annual chance flood hazard area. And for stormwater, they are required to reduce the calculated pre-development flow rate by a full 25% for all stormwater outfall flow directly or indirectly in the Braden River watershed. Because they are a part of the Evers Reservoir watershed protection overlay, they are also required to provide 150% water quality treatment. There is only one county-maintained ditch, and it's located towards the south of the site, and other ditches are maintained by homeowners' associations, community development districts, and the Lakewood Ranch stewardship district. For the transportation-linked capacity analysis, assuming the completion of the four-lane road with the capital improvement plan, the future level of service with this project is Level C, above the county's adopted Level D. This project was viewed with staff for consistency with the comprehensive plan and compliance with the land development code. For the positive aspects of the first comprehensive plan map amendment request, this general development in the area has trended towards residential. The Res 6 would allow for the opportunity to provide a variety of residential types in the general area. Per the environmental narrative, there are no wetlands or native species habitats on site, and the proposed future land use category designation creates the potential for infill development, which would limit urban sprawl. For the negative aspects, the surrounding development pattern has trended towards low-density residential development, and the Res 6 future land use category is intended for medium-density development. Res 6 future land use also allows for a significant increase in the maximum development potential of this site. Currently, at 19 acres, the property would be allowed 19 dwelling units, and Res 6 would allow them to construct up to 117 at a base dwelling potential, 234 with an affordable housing bonus. And finally, there are no bus routes, sidewalks, or bicycle lanes in the area, which may create safety concerns for pedestrians and bicyclists. For both this request and the second request, any proposed development of the project area will have to comply with all applicable standards of the comprehensive plan and the land development code, such as buffering, screening, and setbacks, and the applicant will be required to comply with all applicable standards of the comprehensive plan and the land development will be required to pay their proportionate fair share for any improvements to public infrastructure due to the impact of their development on this site. Now, for the second request, the rezone with the preliminary site plan, some positive aspects include the affordable housing aspect, where up to 25% of the dwelling units will be designated. Multifamily will also be introduced into the area. There is potable water service available to this site. There is frontage along Lorraine Road, which is designated as an urban corridor. The property proposes 40, sorry, 55.45% open space, flip that around, exceeding the 35% requirement, and there are no state or federally listed species on site. For the negative aspects, this proposed development is a significant decrease in the maximum development potential, from 19 dwelling units to 232. The applicant has requested specific approval from LDC Section 401-3E8, which would reduce the open space where adjacent to agricultural operations, and again, there are no bus routes, sidewalks, or bicycle lanes in the area, which would create safety concerns. Additionally, no trees that are currently on site are expected to remain. For the stipulations, the applicant has agreed to enter into a land use restriction agreement pursuant to Chapter 5 of the Land Development Code in a form that is acceptable to us. Additionally, staff received correspondence from the applicant yesterday, offering three new stipulations, which I believe were passed out to you before this presentation. The first is that of the 25% affordable housing, 12.5% is designated at 80% AMI, and 12.5% is designated at 100% AMI. The second, as the applicant went into great detail over, is that the irrigation and landscaping will be designed with an accredited landscape architect and will comply with Florida Water Star standards. And thirdly, the construction will be delayed till next year, and the certificate of occupancy will be delayed until the year after that. In conclusion, staff has found that both requests can be found to be consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan and the applicable standards of the Land Development Code. Staff will continue to conduct a thorough analysis for compliance with both documents at time of final site plan submittal. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for staff?
Could we get transportation up here to talk?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, after that, I have a comment on the proposed stipulations.
Sure.
Good morning, my name is, excuse me, my name is Pony Bonerfields, and I've been sworn for staff.
Thank you. Just, the timing is what bothers me the most about this project. I think it's good infill, density would be okay in five or six years maybe, but, you know, as I understand it, the road won't be widened before 2030, maybe 2031, it's unclear at this point. And this occupancy would, would be 2027, and then you're gonna have the construction of the road going on at the same time. There's no sidewalks, there's no bike ways right now. Even if the property owner puts in sidewalk in front of their property, that does nothing, you know, until it's completed. Can you just speak to the lapse in timing, and what, what will happen to the, you know, three or four years, where the project's there, but the road has not been widened?
But as I know is, the traffic study was conducted with the idea that Lorraine would be widened from two to four lane, but it was postponed for the next five years. I mean, if you consider this segment now, as of today, the length is not deficient, as of today. That would be deficient in the future, that's in the next three to five years, when all the pending, pending projects are built. But if they are planning to build in the next two to three years, which mean at this time, Lorraine would be deficient.
Right, right, and?
Once again, the traffic study was conducted with the idea, Lorraine would to be widened from two to four lane.
Right, okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Any additional questions for staff?
Just want to talk a little bit about the affordable housing, if you don't mind. And the number, just make sure I'm wrapping my head around this right, so?
Of course.
Mr. Rudus still alluded to, with the affordable housing component, it's effectively allowing them to double from six to 12?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And then, under the affordable housing rules, what they're proposing now is, explaining to me how the, if I'm understanding this correct, half of the 25% is at 80%, and the other half is at 100%. So I'm assuming the rules don't dictate or allow the applicant to decide what percentage to AMI of their percentage to affordable housing? It just seems to me, what I'm hearing is that part of the 25% is really not, is affordable housing, but it's reduced a little bit in terms of the prerequisite to qualify. Is that, is that accurate?
So, in Manatee County, affordable housing is designated between 0 to 80% AMI and 80 to 120. So, anything from zero all the way up to 120% AMI is considered in livable manatee as affordable housing.
What's the other section? We'll say John.
I believe that that is also affordable housing.
It might be helpful if we divided those in the terminology to say, low and then moderate or something, because there is a big distinction in those two, just my thoughts.
I'm by no means, you know, I'm, I'm basically illiterate when it comes to, you know, affordable housing, so if I hear 80% of AMI, I really don't know what that means exactly. So can you explain that just in simple terms?
Of course, so, the, the AMI is the annual median income of the county. So, for Manatee County, I believe, and if someone could fact-check me on this, I'm pretty sure it's around mid-70s for annual median income.
So just easy numbers, if the median is 100, and my household is 80, 80 or below, I meet the requirement. Would that be right, under the 80% rule?
Repeat the question one more time for me, please.
Mr. Chair, I have concerns, this, the planner isn't the topic expert on this, we have people who administer the affordable housing program, he may not?
I want to know this information.
He may not have the answer, that's what I'm saying.
Then that's okay.
I swear, I want him to say he doesn't know, rather than guess too much.
If he doesn't know, that's perfectly okay, but just?
Say you don't know, I am concerned about getting too in the deep weeds if we don't have the right person here.
Understood, thank, thank you, Sarah.
Under the 80% of AMI rule?
Yes.
What I'm hearing is, if AMI median is 100 grand, I don't say in it is or it's not, just choose that number, it's for easy numbers.
Yes, just as a hypothetical.
A hypothetical. If my household is $80,000 or lower, that means I then qualify under the 80% of AMI rule?
In the hypothetical, yes.
Okay, I know, I know a lot more stuff goes into that, okay, all right. And so, under the rule, I'm just wondering why half of the 25% is being proposed, and you may not know this, we can ask the applicant, but do you have an understanding as why half of the 25% is at 80%, and the other half is at 100%?
In this case, I do not know, and I think it's a question that's appropriate for the applicant.
Fair enough, thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any further questions?
Ms. Chekaz?
Oh, yeah, I just had two, two comments on the stipulations, all officers received these today, so, on stipulation A9, we can't legally stipulate different percentages by stipulation. If the applicant wants to include this in the land use restriction agreement, he can propose that. But in the Affordable Housing Act, we can't specify this detail in a stipulation for land use. And that's, because this is advice of this office, I've told multiple affordable housing developers the same advice. Say nine would have to come out, and we can't stipulate withholding COs under stipulation C3. If they want to enter an agreement with the county and demify as a holder's harmless for withholding their CO, they can do so, but we can't do it by stipulation. The law is, if they meet building requirements for a CO, we have to issue a CO. They can sell this property tomorrow, and we're dealing with different developers, that's all I mean, we need an agreement on, on with the land to protect us if we have to withhold COs. Actually, I prefer having it deleted, because it doesn't even coordinate, it doesn't even meet the timing of the road anyway, so there's no public purpose served by withholding their CO. If they volunteer, want to say they have intent on timing their phases, that's fine.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Let's open this up for public comment. Please step forward, state your name and the county you live in.
Hi there, I'm Zaid A. Smith, and I'm from Manatee County, and I was sworn. I'm Zaid A. Smith, you're welcome.
And you have been sworn?
I have been sworn, yes. I'm here today to talk to you about the 232-unit family development that's going to be built on Lorraine Road. Listen, I always commend the attempt to bring affordable housing into Manatee County, I think we all agree that we definitely need more of it here, especially realistically in Lakewood Ranch, we don't have a lot of that out there. With that said, it doesn't feel like that is really what this project is about, this feels very much like it is being used as a tool in order to skirt other regulations that are really, really important to the land we have out there, and to the community that already exists in Lakewood Ranch. This project would be meeting bare minimum standards for affordable housing in order to skirt density requirements and to expedite the process. I understand why developers would want to expedite the process, but as a resident out in that area that is driving down Lorraine Road all the time, that is the last thing we want. They're not going to be expanding Lorraine Road until 2030, 2031, maybe after, realistically, but the development would be ready probably around 2027. There is already horrendous traffic. This expansion was not planned for this development. The expansion of Lorraine Road was for the already existing developments, because we already have already existing problems. So, if we expand the road, but we're also expanding the amount of people that are driving down the road, we are not actually solving any of the problems that already exist. Respectfully, we need to start solving the problems we have out in that area when it comes to infrastructure, before we start bringing in more development. On top of that, just, just down the street from there, Rangeland, we have a huge sports complex that is being fleshed out and built, and that's a lot more traffic in the area. And on top of that, we have to remember the schools. Affordable housing, which is great, it also means multifamily housing, and means that we are going to have lots of kids coming into the area. Now, we already have flooded schools over there, and we have a bus driver shortage. My child goes to Lake Manatee, that school just opened down the street from where this development would be. Lake Manatee is a great school, but they have zero buses, zero. Every single student has to be dropped off and picked up by their parents every single day, and that has led to traffic going all the way down the street, and people sitting for hours in pickup lines. That is having a massive impact on those parents' ability to, to pursue their careers. Now, imagine if we added 500 more cars to that street, if we added exponentially more families dropping off their children in those schools. We don't have the ability to take on a project like this right now in that area, simply because we have enough issues that we still need to resolve. So while I deeply respect the need for affordable housing, I feel like we need to start considering the areas we are placing it, and not using the term affordable housing in order to get special permissions and special bonuses to create developments where they don't belong. We don't need to double the density out in that area from what it's supposed to be, that is going to be an absolute nightmare for people. The traffic is going to be exponentially worse, and we're not thinking about the people that are moving into these affordable housing units, because if there are no bus lanes out there, or there are no bike lanes out there, there are no sidewalks out there, this is not going to work for the, the folks that need that affordable housing. So we're not helping anyone, we are only helping developers. So, I would like to urge all of you to, to say no to this project, thank you.
Next person, please.
Hi, Angelina Magnotta, Manatee County, I've been sworn in. I'm here on behalf of over 1,000 residents who signed a petition opposing the Pensler-Lorraine rezoning and density increase. This proposed 232 land, units on land that is currently zoned as Res 6 would double the current allowed density. Beyond density, I believe that the impacts will be severe on our community. Lorraine Road is already congested, and the community itself has already admitted that we must widen this road. Adding 232 units before that widening is complete, puts residents and first responders at risk. In addition, school district reports do not grant concurrency at this time. Approving this project now would burden the already overcrowded classrooms and issues with transportation. This project also is not necessarily compatible with the surrounding single-family neighborhoods. It scales and adds traffic, impacts the area that I believe at this time is not prepared to handle a doubling in the infrastructure. Because of that, I respectfully urge you guys at this time to deny the rezoning, or at least wait until the road widening has been complete and other infrastructure is in place to be able to handle a doubling of influx. Thank you.
Next person, please.
Hi, good morning, my name is Landon Tholen, and I'm a resident in Manatee County at Lorraine Lakes. I haven't been sworn in, I came a few minutes late, do I need to do that?
Anyone else who needs to be sworn in for today's hearing, please stand and raise your right hand. They swear from the factual statements and our presentations, they're about to make their claim, commission are truthful and accurate. Thank you, and you step to the podium, please state your name, county residence, and if you've been sworn.
Thank you. I would just like to voice a few of the concerns, some of which have already been mentioned, so I'll touch briefly on those. The first one's really surrounding the incompatibility with the surroundings of this environment. They want to take it from that Res 1 to the Res 6, which is going to push them up to that 8.9 units per acre, which is hitting that upper max of 12. So they're pushing it right to the limit, and even in the staff notes, that's noted as a significant increase going from that 19 to 232. Lorraine Lakes and the other nearby subdivisions are single home only, large two-story apartment blocks are not compatible with the scale or character. We've heard a lot about Lorraine Lakes Road, the expansion there, and how that's been delayed. As a result of that, that's going to, you know, push everything that's being done for the improvements, or excuse me, it's going to impact the, I'll start over there, sorry, let's see. Yeah, ultimately, not being built and not being projected until the early 2030s is going to be detrimental to the surrounding communities. It's already bad enough today, and having, you know, construction and all of these events ongoing right now is going to make that severely worse. There's going to be safety concerns that have been mentioned, there's no bike lanes, sidewalks, bus routes, this is dangerous for the local community. And then, ultimately, for the public services and utilities, I mean, in the, in the staff report, it was mentioned that the potable water is jumping from nearly 23,000 gallons per day to 58,000, it's 100, nearly 150% increase. Likewise, for sewer consumption, it's moving up to about 121% increase. These are not incremental increases, these are multiples of the current capacity. This is going to more than double the load, the load on local utilities, focusing the county to upgrade or expand infrastructure. And that really begs the ultimate question of, why should public utilities and taxpayers absorb a two to two and a half increase in demand just so one developer can build at the maximum density? And I think we've covered everything with Lorraine Lakes Road, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Marty Conbest, I am in Manatee County, and I was sworn in previously. Again, everybody's kind of covered all of our things that we've talked about, but I do want to make a point that the neighborhood workshop, it stated in the staff report that a copy of the mailed notices were sent to property owners. Not sure where those went to, considering that we are within 30 feet of the back of that property, so I'm not sure, we were never notified of that meeting. Certainly, there would have been more than two residents of the area in that kind of neighborhood workshop. Then, sorry. Then, sorry. The biggest concern I think we all have is the density and Lorraine Road. I've traveled on Lorraine Road after, when it's raining. We're already getting puddles. There's chances of hydroplaning. I mean, it's already, can be dangerous during bad weather, and we're going to add that many more cars. We stayed in, I just, a little history, we stayed in an Airbnb in Ellington, a one-lane road right by the outlet mall when we first moved here, and they built apartment complexes right there, and it would take 20, 30 minutes just to get out of your neighborhood, just because the road was not, the infrastructure wasn't there first. So that's really what we're asking, is that the road be built, the infrastructure be there before we build a community like this. 232 units, in my mind, is extreme.
Any additional comments?
Hey, good morning. Oh, gosh. Janiele Taylor. I've been sworn in. What excites me most about this project is that it represents smart growth done the right way. This is infill development inside the county's planned growth boundary and compatible with the communities that have grown around us. That means this isn't sprawl. It's growth where it belongs, using roads, schools, and utilities already in place that are not past the F dab line. What really stands out to me is how this project raises the bar. Too often, development is seen as something that takes away, which it does. Open land, trees, community character. But here, we have a project that's giving back with significant open space, Water Star certification, which is saving water, Florida-friendly landscaping. It puts quality of life, sustainability, and environmental responsibility at the center. It shows that growth doesn't have to be losing the things that we value. It can actually enhance them. This project provides something our county urgently needs: housing choices. Families, young professionals, are all struggling to find a place they call home. By bringing new housing into the area for planned growth thoughtfully and with care for design and livability, this development sets an example of how to grow responsibly. For me, this isn't just about one application. It's about showing that Manatee County can grow in a way that is balanced, forward-looking, and community-minded. That's the message this project sends. And I also wanted to throw out there, the neighborhood meeting was in 2024. All of those neighbors, they didn't even exist yet. Their houses weren't even built when we had our neighborhood meeting. Six years ago, we shot clays in our backyard, in their backyards, that are now houses. So it's changed around us. So I urge to support this project so we can elevate the standards of responsible development in our county. We need to set the example, and this is it.
Hello, John Smith, Manatee County. I have been sworn in. I'd like to just -- John Smith. I do have identification if people need it. Again, John Smith. I'd like to echo the sentiment of my neighbors. This is a, just taking the density from an R1 to, I believe it was called, an R6 seems pretty extreme. It went from 19 houses to 252 or 62 or whatever it was. As a resident who lives basically on the Rain Road, watching policemen have to stop traffic so the church can get out, and now we're going to add in probably about 500 other cars, the jobs that were listed on the gentleman's proposal paralegal, and I think there was a doctor or something on there, and they were made, and then I believe you had mentioned, or one of the staff members had mentioned, that the median income is $70,000. I don't expect any of those people to be using public transport. The buses, they're going to go unused. Even as a young professional making $30,000, I struggled to buy, bought a car. That was one of the great things about America, is purchasing a car and getting your freedom. Now, that's going to add a ton of traffic to the roads, and as a young woman behind me pointed out, the widening of the road is there for the problems that exist today. It's not there for the problems of tomorrow, and adding probably, you know, 500, maybe 600 cars is only going to exacerbate that problem. Furthermore, on the safety, driving to and from schools, I see young kids, maybe they shouldn't be, but I see them in the street riding their e-bikes, their scooters. Some are on the sidewalks, some of them aren't paying attention, and there is potentially a major safety issue for that. And then I would also just like to echo the sentiment of it does seem pretty incompatible with the design and the, you know, the single-family homes, and we went from one to six. It doesn't seem in the community's best interest. I would also like to echo that in one of the notes, no existing trees would be present. That does seem to me that they're going to have to bulldoze the land, and there might be a potential environmental impact. I don't know anything about flood zoning or any of that business, but I believe we're now at a flood risk in that area, and stripping it all away is probably going to further our flood issues. I believe somebody had just mentioned that some of the streets are already starting to flood, and now we're going to be taking away some of the things that pull that water into the earth and keep that water there, and now some of our roads are going to be further impacted. So to condense it, I don't think it's compatible with the residents of Lakewood Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name's Katie Smith, and I actually have not been sworn in, but I feel compelled to speak after hearing my community members. So sorry.
Who else? Please swear further with factual statements and representations you're about to make to the planning commission are truthful and accurate.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just feel it's really important to reiterate everything that the people who live in this area are saying. I find it a little concerning that a community meeting was held in 2024 when a community didn't exist at that point, and there was no effort to reschedule or hold another one in the entire timeframe between then and now that the community exists. That leads me to believe that the developers are aware that the community would not respond well. I also find it unethical to utilize a marginalized community that needs resources to skirt regulations to get the development done faster without ensuring that there's infrastructure in place to actually support that community. As previously mentioned, you know, the affordable housing, that's going to be a lot of families. There's no sidewalks on the street. The schools are overpacked. There's no, there's a teacher shortage, a bus shortage, and there's no public transportation. How are parents that are living, you know, in circumstances like that supposed to hold an hourly job? They're not going to be able to. To keep it short, you know, please listen to your constituents. Please vote in favor of actual productive development and putting that infrastructure in. Yeah, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Edward Leggeri, Manatee County, and I have been sworn. I'll have to spell it out. Leggeri, Edward Leggeri. As my neighbor is adequately represented, we don't think it's time for this right now. My biggest concern is the flood risk. Since I purchased, there's this new third-party company that is labeling our area a higher flood risk. I would love you guys to look into it. I don't understand why, but now we're Zone X, but we're at a higher flood risk in our neighborhood, and I don't think this is going to help at all. I think, that's what I have, density, I mean, everything that everybody said. My big issue is the flood risk. So I urge you not to approve this motion. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
My name is Garrett Grinnell, currently a resident of Manatee County and Lorraine Lakes, actually living.
You have been sworn?
I have been sworn in, yes. Living on the boundary which this development is going to be, you know, proposed to be established in. I moved here in April of this year after living a decade in Chicago, so I'm very aware of what affordable housing looks like and the various, you know, different communities. When I picked Lorraine Lakes and specifically Lakewood Ranch, I'm expecting a child tomorrow, and this is a very family-friendly community, and I've experienced the traffic on Lorraine Road after living here through the summer, and just echo many of the comments that were said today. You know, being a resident of a prior county in a different state, I didn't feel empowered or have any impact to be able to have a conversation, but I felt like this was timely and going to directly impact me over the next five years of driving up and down Lorraine Road, taking my kids to the public schools, which I plan to use. So just speaking on behalf of many of the folks, as I was one of them that signed that petition or the 1,000 signatures, just wanted to make it known that it's a huge concern of mine, again, after just moving here in April and getting a letter in the mail a few days ago. So appreciate the time. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? At this time, let's close public comment. Can we have the applicant discuss some of the issues?
Morning. My name is Basit Ali, Hillsborough County, and I've been sworn in. I'm the project traffic engineer. I know a lot of comments were said about how many cars would be put on the road, but I just would like to set the record straight that the project is anticipated to generate 78 trips north, I mean, sorry, south of the project site and about 42 trips north of that during the PMP hour, which is the worst peak hour of the day for trip generation. Obviously, off-peak could be a lot less, especially somebody mentioned school drop-off and getting off times, and obviously, the project trips during that time would be a lot less. Also, when we did our traffic study, we considered existing traffic, also vested or, as we call reserve, trips and project traffic, and upon project build-out in 2027, we are expecting about 1,950 total trips on Lorraine Road. As it stands today as a two-lane roadway, Lorraine Road's capacity is 2,200 vehicles. So with the project traffic build-out, you'll still have a buffer of 15% still capacity left, based on our traffic study, obviously.
Once they do the four-lane road and that would be better, I guess?
Four-lane would be better, but based on our traffic study in which we considered existing vested and project traffic, we would still be under the capacity for a two-lane roadway by at least 15%.
What off-site road improvements we all have to do?
As a project, so we are building exclusive right-turn lanes at both project driveways and an exclusive left-turn lane at the full-access project driveway.
An additional sidewalk, I guess.
Can I ask you how far apart the, if you know at this point, how far apart the two access points to the project would be on Lorraine?
388 feet apart.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, did I miss it? Did you do an AM peak?
No, we did not, because AM peak has less project traffic as well as less traffic in general. PMP hour is considered to be the worst-case scenario by Manatee County in terms of background vested traffic as well. So a lot of times for AM peak hour periods, most projects do not do any traffic analysis, so we wouldn't know what vested trips are there for the AM peak hour, but generally, PMP hour is the worst.
I know. It's usually people though that don't drive their kids to school that come up with that.
Those are county standards.
Any additional questions for traffic?
Thank you.
John Oswald, for the record. Just to follow a little bit on the traffic side, in terms of some comments were made about, you know, the development of the road and the expansion of the roadway. When I worked for the county years ago, we planned the road system based upon specific traffic modeling and build-out for the area. That's why the road is designated to be a future four-lane road on your future thoroughfare plan, which is in your comprehensive plan. And occasionally, the planning commission and board will get updates to that map as the modeling is updated by the long range, via the long-range transportation by the NPO or any internal modeling that happens with county staff. So sometimes you do see changes in future calls of roadways and that kind of thing, but that is designed to be handled, the build-out scenario of that area. Also, it was also mentioned too about, you know, the project not potentially meeting with, really, was what's concurrency standards, your water system, your sewer system, and your stormwater and that kind of thing. We have to meet those things, obviously, all the county standards that are in place, the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. It will be also, they'll be reviewed again in detail at the final site plan, which is the civil engineering plan set. Also, keep in mind too that, you know, the use today is agricultural, and it's actually a nursery. And while I don't think there's been any complaints yet from neighbors, but keep in mind that that is an intense use. There's trucks, there's lifts going on, there's pickups, and agriculture operations start pretty darn early in the morning. And also being A-zoned, even though it's just a, it's a nursery today, it could be something else tomorrow if the family sold it to another farmer or something like that. There's a lot of things that you could do that are certainly worse than that in terms of agricultural use. Last thing I was going to mention was the county's incentives for affordable housing was mentioned, you know, being unethical. Well, the county has recognized, based upon Port Housing Coalition, University of Florida Schenburg Center, the development community and the academic community and the people that provide funding for housing and the people that are in need of housing. But again, if you look at the United Ways Report they put out every year in terms of identifying the people that need affordable housing in our area, the county has put these incentives in place as a reaction to understand the, what it's required to get affordable housing in an environment where the land prices are very high. And there's also a lot of things that in the development community you have to do, regardless if it's affordable or not, and it's expensive to build. So that's why, unethical, no, it's just things you have to have to help make it happen and build new housing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rudesil.
Thanks, John. Just to wrap up, I wanted to go back and make sure Commissioner Bowers' question was answered on the affordability component and kind of what we're doing and why. The standard in Manatee County to be eligible for the density bonus is 25% of the units at 120% AMI. But we've heard from the board that they don't look at that as being really that affordable anymore, and they don't love that standard. So that's why the developer in this case said, okay, we're willing to go to a lower affordability standard, so instead of doing 120s, the entire, you know, 25% of the project, we're going to go down to 80s for half of that, and we're going to go to 100s for half of that. So that's a lot of additional affordability. It really hits the bottom line of the project, but they're willing to do that, and they recognize that that's something that the board is looking for, and so that's why they're doing it. With that.
Let me just give you my thought process with all this a little bit. So as I was initially looking at this, I think the compatibility argument can go both ways. I can see the argument that it is compatible. I can also see the argument that it's not. One of the speakers talked about, effectively alluded to, the affordable component is kind of like a push to just get it approved, okay? And I'll be honest with you, at first blush, I felt the same way, and here's why I was coming to that conclusion. So you're going from six to 12. I don't make the rules, of course, that's fine. 25% of that is affordable housing, which means now you're getting two more dwellings per acre, okay? Because only four are going to affordable housing. You can get six if we got approved at Res 6, but now you're getting eight, and four according to affordable housing. So I don't know how, I'm not a developer, I don't know the financial component in terms of money lost or how much little profit. or how much little profit there is from affordable housing. But you're getting two more at the same price that you would be charging for the six along with everything else that you're getting. So I think potentially, I don't know what the board's decision today is in moving up to the county, but I think that there's got to be a considerable component to the community that I think is going to get this across the finish line, potentially based off of what I've been seeing from the board. So the 25% component, I don't see it necessarily as, I mean, it's good, but it's actually better for you. Does that make sense in my mind? That's where my head's at.
Right. Understand what you're thinking. We could probably bring Connor up here to get into all the numbers if you wanted to. I don't know that you'd necessarily want to do that.
No, but-
But I understand what you're saying.
Having the dialogue.
But that's why the county encourages it. And on purpose, they want it to be only a fraction of the project because you want the, you don't want a total affordable project. I mean, obviously, you saw one earlier today that's a total affordable project.
It was totally different.
Right, totally different tax credit project. You want to have a mix. You want to have those units mixed in with normal market rate units to make a good project. And so that's kind of the thinking behind it. But understanding your comments, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions for the applicant? Staff closing comments? Also, before you do that, density around the area, is there anything close to six to 12?
I do not believe so.
Normally, we get a map that shows the density or the different subdivisions or something, but, okay.
I will say, when it comes to the density bonuses and intensity bonuses that the comprehensive plan allows, this is all just standard Manatee County policy. There are certain things that planning in Manatee wants to encourage. And so the appropriate bonuses, densities, and intensities are encouraged through the comprehensive plan. As to whether or not the 25% is the appropriate benchmark, I think that's more of a policy question than it is relating to this particular project. But I just wanted to reiterate that this is just standard policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Applicant closing comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I wanted to add, kind of go into what you were asking about. This area was planned, remember, and actually where Lorraine Lakes is right now, was designated as ag-rural. It was beyond the future development area boundary. And they amended the comp plan for that area and they modified it to an MUC category with activity centers and actually allows them to go up to nine units an acre. They didn't end up doing that, but that's how that area is designated. There are more dense projects, obviously, up at Lorraine and 64. There are 20 unit to the acre mixed-use projects that are approved and being developed up there. So that is kind of, and then to the south as well, if you're familiar with the Oasis project further down Lorraine closer to 70, that's also over 20 units an acre. So with that, we're respectfully requesting your approval and thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've got a question kind of for, I think for Sarah or for staff here. We were talking about, and again, this is for clarification, they were talking about the stipulations. You were making some comments on the stipulations. Which, my question is which item that we have here is tied to the changes in the stipulations?
Only the quasitional item, which is number two. Your first vote would be on the comp plan amendment three.
Even though they're numbered differently?
Yeah, they changed order, I guess.
So number two is the one that has the stipulation?
Correct.
Correct? And then the second, I think you just answered it. These are not tied together, correct? These are two completely separate? Because I think there was a comment when we first started that they were tied together.
Well, first you vote on the comp plan amendment issue. And if that passes, then you vote on the quasitional item.
Which is the stipulations?
Yes.
Are we just going to go into comments?
Well, on the map issue, we're voting on moving it from agricultural to six, density-wise. And the other one would add the 12.
So from RES 1 to RES 6?
Right.
And then from AG, sorry, A to PDR?
Yep.
With the land use restriction stipulations?
Correct.
Any discussion?
But changing it from RES 1 to RES 6 would give then the green light to build today? At the six?
They would still need their preliminary site plan approved and then their final site plan approved and their construction plan. So there are other approvals that are tied to what they would need to do beyond today's entitlements.
Got it. Okay.
So which one are we?
We're voting on the mapping first.
Which is number three on?
Yes, number three on our agenda right now.
This is about RES 1 to RES 6, just making sure.
I believe so, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, I'll speak first. Like other projects where we don't have the infrastructure in place, as much as I like the project, I'm teeter on the compatibility part, but I'm just kind of throwing that component out. I think everything else that you guys are doing is really, really good. You know, being so close to 44th Avenue, even though it's not, again, the compatibility part, just take that out. But from the traffic standpoint and the infrastructure of getting that done, I just, I think it's just bad timing. It's unfortunate that is the case. It's not your fault. I blame the previous boards for doing irresponsible growth without putting the infrastructure in place. I don't know how you get here from there. I wish there was a way. I wish there was some sort of combination of private and government work to get this stuff done sooner. Because government is slow, unfortunately, right? But I, my major problem is, like anything else that I have an issue with, is the infrastructure is not in place for it. Community suffers in the meantime. I just, that's a problem. And I hope that we can get that fixed sooner rather than later. So that's where I'm at with this.
I agree on the infrastructure. That's my biggest issue. I think, you know, it's two-story. I think it could be compatible down the road when the road is widened. I think infill's great, affordable housing's great. But I think the timing is just the whole issue here for me. We don't really know when this road is going to be wide and it could be delayed. Who knows how long? And I think just adding more at this time is just not good timing.
From the perspective, I have no problem with the compatibility. I think the Water Star is a fantastic approach on this. I think the, I think clearly, I'm going to share the sentiments that changing from RES 1 to RES 6 at this time, I won't be voting for that.
I am in agreeance with my fellow commissioners. The infrastructure, I do love the project. And I love the fact that it's a two-story instead of a towering four-story that everybody seems to be building. I love the, you know, the landscaping. I love all of that. I do not love 80 to 100%. I'm one of the commissioners up here that will ask every single time, what is AMI? I don't consider 80 to 120% affordable housing. I know it's written that way. But for everyday people, waitresses, servers, everyday people that go to work, that's, it's not affordable. And I would love to see more projects come before this board that are 50% or less. That's true of affordable housing. That will help the communities. That will help the people that go to work nine to five. So while I love the project, there are so many positives to this project. For me, the negative aspects outweigh it and I will not be voting for it.
I'm going to keep my comments brief. I'm going to have to echo my fellow commissioners and agree with that point. But it's just another example of a good project being brought in front of us, but we as a community not being prepared for it. And as far as planning for growth, again, it's just, it's a wonderful project. But the timing is not right. You know, we're going to widen Lorraine Road to four lanes in five years. There's got to be a way to accelerate some of this stuff so we can plan properly. And as Commissioner Bauer said, you know, I blame this on past commissions, past planning commissions, past commissioners, just not having the foresight to plan ahead. And here's another example of something that's needed in the community and has, and meets all the requirements, but the timing, in my perspective, is not correct. Thank you.
May I entertain a motion, please? That is for item number three.
I'll move to deny the motion. Shocker. So I'll move to deny the motion.
And I'll second.
Mr. Kuslinger, motion. Ms. Kepa's seconded it. May I show hands of denial, I guess, or approving his request? If I could make it any harder?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. So with that, we don't vote for number two or do we?
Well, for the record, I would vote on two, just so we have it clear.
So could we have a motion for number two, please? Ms. Kepa?
To deny.
Motion to deny. Ms. Prosser is the second. May I show her hands for setting the? Passes 6-0. Do we want to take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break. We'll do it 11 o'clock.
Yes. It's LDC 2508, ordinance 25-42, county-initiated land development code text amendment for final plots. This is PLN 2506-0223, and the presenter today will be Elizabeth Schulman.
Elizabeth Schulman, and I have been sworn. So this is a land development code text amendment on final plots, and it's county-initiated. So Florida statute was amended requiring administrative approval of final plots and replats, with no further action to be taken by the Board of County Commissioners. And this was done via Senate Bill 784, which became effective July 1st. And this, all this amendment is doing is revising all references to the board approving plots and replaces them with administrative approval. Resolution R 25151 implemented the change, and this amendment is codifying the new language. And this ensures compliance with state statutes. And here are a list of all of our proposed changes, again, just changing references instead of board approval to administrative approval. And this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the land development code. Your approval is requested.
Any questions?
Has the county put together any standard operating procedure for the approval process? Who's in charge of that? Who's second? What is the process that they run into? Issues? Any type of standard procedure?
Yeah, there is a whole procedure in place about who will have administrative approval. It's the county administrator. And through the resolution, I think that they went over all, everything that will happen. So the county administrator will have final approval, and the staff has come up with a, you know, a procedure in order to make sure that everything is...
Is it written?
Yep. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to jump in and answer that the county attorney's office was extensively coordinating with staff right before this became effective, since mid-June. And the clerk's office has been involved in the process for recording, process for accepting bonds. So it's been coordinated extensively by staff way since June on doing this.
If I'm a county commissioner, and effectively we're running a business right here, to sort of speak, I would want a written standard operating procedure, ideally. So just making a suggestion to have that done if it's not done, because again, if I'm on the, I don't have a whole lot. I guess that maybe that's an county administrator thing, not a commissioner thing.
Well, I would point out in this instance, we have Chapter 177 of Florida statutes that extensively detail on plots, and it preempted to the state on how we do things.
I don't disagree. Yeah, I'm not arguing that.
And we also have the guidelines and the review standards in the code. I haven't personally been involved in writing everything out.
Yeah.
Sometimes if you, there's no point in writing it once if it's been written already in the state statute.
Make my remark kind of an asterisk.
Any additional questions?
So this is state mandated, so we really don't have a choice.
Correct. Correct. We had a, no, the session ended kind of late, so we were like, June 10th, oh my God, it's effective. So we had to scramble to get the various departments involved and coordinating, and we had to resolution the board delegating authority so they'd be out of the approval process.
Okay.
And this is just an LDC amendment, it didn't implement what the resolution says, but we need to put in our code and true it up.
Okay. Thanks.
Any additional questions?
Motion to approve.
Let's open up for public comment.
Sorry.
Anybody from the public would like to speak on this matter? Not seeing anybody. Let's close, well, do we have anybody on the telephone?
No callers, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Let's close public comment. Applet, any closing comments? May I entertain a motion?
All right.
Mr. Bauer motioned. Can I have a second?
Sounds great.
Oh, done. Oh, wow.
Catch up, brother.
I'd like to add in a public. Ms. Zegler was second, it passes six-zero. Could we have the next item read enough?
Five and six. Five and six are to be read together, they're companion items. Ordinance number 25-43, Sarasota Bradenton International Airport, DRI number 15, PLN 2505-0192. This is quasi-judicial item, amending and restating a development order pursuant to Chapter 380 Florida statutes for the Sarasota Bradenton International Airport Development of Regional Impact, Ordinance 2105. This is DRI number 15. To approve the following changes to map H and the development order to: One, delete 20,000 square feet of light industrial uses from Phase 1 and add 20,000 square feet of school of special education uses to Phase 2 on Out parcel 2. Two, to clarify the acreages devoted to each land use in Out parcel 2. Three, to reflect the statutory tolling and extension of expiration dates, codify and restate the existing development order for DRI number 15, revisions to terminology and format, and clarification changes. Sarasota Bradenton International Airport is boarded by US 41 to the west, Telavas to the north, 15th Street East, Old US 301 to the east, and University Parkway to the south on approximately 1,123.45 acres. Item number six is PDMU 99-07, Perrin G, Perrin R8, Bradenton Sarasota International Airport, again, DRI number 15, Sarasota Manti Airport Authority, PLN number 2505-0191, quasi-judicial. CJ Mills will be your case planner for both items. This item amends ordinance PDMU 99-07, Perrin G, Perrin R7 slash AI for the airport overlay. Plan Development Mixed Use Airport Overlay District approving a general development plan to remove 20,000 square feet of light industrial uses and add 20,000 square feet of school and special education uses on Out parcel 2 and approximately 8.32-acre parcel generally located north of West University Parkway on the east side of 15th Street East and commonly known as 8324 Lindbergh Court, Sarasota.
Thank you. Has there been any expert communication on this? And this is presentation upon request. Does anybody want a full presentation? Could we have Applet do a brief presentation on both of them, please?
I'm Dan Bailey, attorney for the airport.
Yes, sir.
Would be happy to make a presentation if you have any questions, but otherwise, we're basically, this is not new development, it's an existing building. We're going to convert about 40% of it to a different use. It would be a kind of a vocational school for training for flight attendants in corporate jets. And so, but because we're locked into our DRI, it's now celebrated its 40th birthday, and I was there when it was born, we're having to go through this process. We will be approaching you sometime soon to terminate that DRI, convert our entitlements to another format, and that'll come before you, hopefully, in a few months, so.
Any questions for Applet? Anything from staff? Okay. At this time, public comments? Close public comments. May I entertain a motion for item number five?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Zegler, a second by Ms. Kepa. Please cast your votes. It passes six-zero. Can I have a motion for item number six, please?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Ms. Prosser.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Kepa. We're just so fast today. The wheels of justice. I think we did five. Yeah.
If you want to just do a...
Yep. Can we just do a verbal?
Okay.
And is this for item six or five now?
We did item five.
Okay, we did item five, so. Motion to accept?
I thought we did.
It says six on it, though.
Oh, we did five.
Okay.
And now this is number, item five.
Okay. So, motion passes six-zero. Okay. Please read item number seven in the record.
Item number seven is PDMU 25-03, Perrin G, Hilton Live Smart and WoodSpring Suites Hotel Gulf Coast Factory Shops, LTD PA. This is PLN 2501-0193, quasi-judicial. Laura Gonzalez is the planner presenting today. This is a general development plan for, one, an existing 515,776-square-foot commercial development to remain unchanged, and, two, the addition of one hotel with up to 122 rooms and one hotel with up to 124 rooms for a maximum of up to 110,060 square feet on a 68.79-acre property located at the southeast corner of I-75 and US 301, south of 29th Street East and west of 60th Avenue East in Ellington, commonly known as the Gulf Coast Factory Shops Ellington Premium Outlets. This property is zoned PDMU CPA, Plan Development Mixed Use Coastal Planning Area.
Has there been any expert communication in this? Not seeing any presentation upon request. Would a brief presentation be acceptable? I know you want to go full.
I'm happy to give you a brief presentation, or just answer...
I thought there was going to be a Red Lobster somewhere around there. Olive Garden? Could we have an update on that, too?
As soon as I get one for you, Commissioner.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. Wait on the PowerPoint. Good morning, planning commissioners, Mr. Chair. My name is Marshall Robinson. I'm a land planner with Grand Galvano, and I have been sworn. Joined with me today is Bill Clegg, our legal counsel from Grand Galvano. We also have Mr. Michael Yates with Palm Traffic, Owen Berry with Noble Investment Group, and John Bianco of Noble Investment Group. Mr. Chair, today we're here to talk about property located on the corner, northeast corner of I-75 and 301, south of 29th Street East and west of 60th Avenue East, commonly known as the Ellington Premium Outlet Mall on 68.76 acres. As mentioned by Ms. Layton, we are in the mixed-use future land use category. We have a zoning of PDMU. We are in the coastal planning area, and we're in the entranceway of the I-75 and 301. Originally, this project was approved for a DRI called Gulf Coast Factory Shops back in 1997, and it was subject to a zoning ordinance, PDMU 9701. That project was approved for 633,681 square feet for a manufacturer's factory outlet center and ancillary uses. The DRI and the GDP expired back in 2007 per the conditions of the zoning ordinance, where 515,766 square feet were constructed, leaving 117,915 square feet of unconstructed entitlements in that expired development order. Mr. Chair, our request here today is for an infill development project to reestablish approval of a general development plan consisting of the existing outlet mall and proposed 110,060 square feet for two proposed hotels having a total of 246 rooms. We had a pre-application conference with your county staff back in September of 2024. We filed our application for the GDP approval this past January, and we held our virtual neighborhood workshop this past May. Here's a look at our existing and proposed conditions. Again, the site is 68.76 acres. We got access on to 29th Street East to the north, 60th Avenue East to the east. Proposed are two hotels with 122 rooms and 124 rooms in the north portion of the site. Our maximum FAR on this project is 1.0 with the existing hotel and the two proposed hotels. That puts our FAR to 0.21. Screening and buffering, as shown, will be maintained and implemented as originally approved with a slight increase to open space, as the proposed hotels will add some parking islands. The existing open space is at 30.8%, will be increased to 31.18% with the addition of the hotels. We have roadway buffers, 30-foot roadway buffer to the north at 29th Street East. We've got 28 to 50 feet of roadway buffer at I-75 to the west, and we have 60-foot of roadway buffer to the south at the I-75 ramp. There are no on-site wetlands, no increase to impervious surface calculations, as the proposed hotels are located in the existing parking lot for the outlet mall. And there will be no, the proposed hotels will utilize the existing on-site stormwater. We have confirmed with Public Works that there are no capacity issues for water and sewer, and the parking requirements are satisfied, and we agree with the staff's analysis and the staff report. Mr. Chair, I think this is the map you were looking for earlier that shows a little bit of the neighborhood and our surrounding areas. This map here shows that we are 432 feet of separation from the Palm Grove Apartments to our east, and we're about 1,000 feet of separation to the residential development to our north. Adjacent to our immediate boundary on the northwest side of the site is the Ellington Ice and Sports Complex. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for the applicant?
Just a quick one. So coming off the interstate, people are going to do a left turn onto 60th?
Correct.
And then use the Factory Shops Boulevard to access the hotels?
Yes, Commissioner, that's correct. We'll have, once we get into our final site plan, construction plan approval, that's where we'll establish our access easements for those existing accesses.
Do you happen to know, and forgive me for not knowing, with all the construction that's been going on with I-75 and those roads, people are now just being trained to turn onto 60th? Is there any expansion, any improvement for 60th that you know about?
With that, I'm going to bring up our traffic engineer, Mr. Michael Yates of Palm Traffic. Go ahead, Mike.
Good morning still. Mike Yates with Palm Traffic. There is a CIP, I guess we'll see as they get through all the budgets. There is a CIP project on the road, just to finish the widening up to 29th. As you know, from 301 up to Factory Shops, it's a four-lane facility. And then from, and then it tapers down once you get north of the Factory Shops, down to a two-lane. So the CIP has that extending the four-lane section up to 29th, which is the very northern end. And I'll put on an aerial real quick so I can show you from here. Can you see that? Okay. So obviously, this is where 301 is. This is the Factory Shops right here, and so it's this little segment from here to here. This is 29th that runs by the ice rink and serves as access for the apartments that just got built. So this would ultimately complete that four-lane section. You can see the roads already shifted to one side, so they built half the widening. And then the CIP also contemplates adding sidewalks from 29th all the way north. So it would complete a lot of road network that has just been missing. But when we did our analysis, we didn't really include any of the additional capacity. the additional capacity. We base it on what the existing capacity is of the road without the improvements. Did that answer your question fully? Okay.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Staff, anything? Well, you sat here all day. You can come on up here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Laura Gonzalez with the staff. I have been sworn. I agree with the applicant presentation, but I'm happy to answer any question.
Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Staff closing, well, let's open up for public. Anybody from the public? Closing public comments, staff closing, applicant closing?
Respectfully request your recommendation. Thank you.
Any discussion or could I entertain a motion?
I'll motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
So we have Mr. Bauer, motion, and Mr. Zegler seconded it. Please cast your votes. Motion passes 6-0, and that was our, that was our last case, so I'll close the plating commission. Thank you.